All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our December 12th, 2023 Borough Council Meeting. Tonight, we are conducting our Borough Council Meeting both in person and virtually. We appreciate that you've joined us here tonight for this meeting. During public participation, public hearings, public hearing portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand digitally. A member of our staff will unmute your microphone and allow you to make comment. And then if you're joining us here in the chambers tonight, if you'll step up to the podium, there is a sign-in sheet. We ask that you state your name and whether you're a borough resident or not. We will have two public comment periods tonight, one towards the beginning, one towards the end. We will start with folks who are joining us here in council chambers for each of those public participation sessions. We do ask the participants keep their comments to three minutes or less, and the first session of public participation tonight will be limited to one hour. Thank you for joining us. We will now begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance and moment of silence.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And Ms. Crack, we'll start with the roll call. Ms. Berkeley.
Present.
Mr. Kermito. Ms. Dugan. Mr. Kirkner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Webb.
Present.
Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Ewald.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Manager, Assistant Chief Solicitor, here you have a cork.
Thank you.
Tonight, we will begin section three of our agenda. We do have a presentation tonight on the swearing in of Patrol Officer Chase Rondo with Mayor Urschler.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for those of you who are joining us here in the, in our actual borough chambers, and also thank you to those who are joining us virtually. We are very excited to welcome tonight our newest patrol officer, and that is Mr. Chase Rondo. And I will now turn it over to our extraordinary chief, Mr. Brian Marshall, Chief Brian Marshall, who will go ahead and read Chase's bio to us.
Counsel and members of our communities, my pleasure to introduce the newest member of the Phoenixville Police Department, Mr. Chase Rondo. Accepted an offer of employment after exceptionally well testing throughout a rigorous hiring process that began this past June. Chase demonstrated that he's among the best of the best from the applicant pool, and we are fortunate that he's joining our organization. Chase was born in Lansdale and raised in Worcester Township. He graduated from LaSalle College High School in 2019. Chase then attended Rsinus College and graduated this past May with a Bachelor of Arts degree in Media and Communications. He was also the captain of their sinus lacrosse team his junior and senior year. After graduation, Chase enrolled in the Police Academy at Montgomery County Community College, and he completed his training requirements a long time ago, yesterday. Lieutenant McIntyre, Lieutenant Nimick, and myself will be attending his Police Academy graduation ceremony tomorrow night. Chase is joined here this evening by both parents, his brother, and other family and friends. His girlfriend Jenna will be holding the Bible this evening.
Thank you very much, Chief. And before we begin with the swearing in, I also just want to take a moment also to acknowledge all of our extraordinary members of our Phoenixville Police Department who have joined us tonight. So please join us in acknowledging all of our incredible officers. And without further ado, we add another incredible officer. So Chase, if you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the borough of Phoenixville.
And the borough of Phoenixville.
I will.
I will.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
As an officer.
As an officer.
With the borough of Phoenixville Police Department.
With the borough of the Phoenixville Police Department.
Phoenixville.
Phoenixville.
Chester County.
Chester County.
Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
And enforce.
And enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
Of a person's race.
Of a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age. National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations, Officer Rondo.
Thank you all so much. We now invite our officers and certainly Chase's family and friends who'd like to join us. That goes along. We will take some photos while the...
We'll just pause for a moment while the room settles. And here I thought they were all here for the budget. Well, I mean, there is another police officer position in the budget, so, but they're all just here to support our budget. All right. With that, we will move on at this point with the first round of public participation. So any members of the public wishing to make public comment, please make your way up to the podium, sign in, and then one by one, if you can state your name and whether you're a borough resident or not. As we made mention in the preamble, we will start with those joining us in the room here in council chambers, and then we will move to those joining us virtually on the Zoom platform. So any members of the public wishing to make public comment.
Good evening. My name is Sally Doyle. I'm from Phoenixville. I'm with Ri 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 Plastics, and we are a group that formed through the Phoenixville Green Team and Phoenixville Area Transition. And tonight, you have the ordinance back before you again. We have been to a couple of policy meetings where you've met and discussed, and I just want to say thank you for bringing it here, and thank you for all the work that's been done on it. I think you really do a good job of letting the store owners, shopkeepers, whatever you want to call them, giving them a chance to feel, say what they feel, and you worked with them and made the policy what it is, and we thank you. Hope you approve it. Thanks.
Good evening. Rodney Platt here, also with Phoenixville Area Transition and the Green Team. I want, I understand that the latest version of the Plastic Ordinance 2024 coming out of the Policy Committee will likely be, get the blessing of council perhaps tonight to be advertised very soon. I want to congratulate and thank the committee and council for their conscientiousness and mindful work in crafting such an ordinance. I think we all can live with to start and tweak gently down the road as necessary. Again, thanks.
Hi, David Lutzger, Phoenixville resident, Morgan Street, and president of the Green Team. Let me state the obvious to start to say, it has been a long road to reach this point, which I hope tonight will be the milestone. And happy to see it come. I'm happy to see things that perhaps we hope to see in the ordinance, to see voluntary compliance by, let's say, the large stores. And we'll be glad to see voluntary compliance starting as soon as possible and not wait for January 2025. So, so glad we got to this point. I just want to summarize by saying that the ordinance is to encourage consumers and commercial establishments within the borough to reduce the use and environmental impact of single-use plastics by promoting the use of reusable bags, utilizing alternatives to single-use plastic straws, and substituting other biodegradable products for polystyrene containers. It sounds familiar. It's from the purpose and intent from the ordinance, but for everyone else's benefit that doesn't have it in front of them, it's a, it's a great goal, and I'm glad we're here. Thank you.
Hello, Lucy Graham here. I'm a resident of 45 North Main Street, and I'm also a member of Ri 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 Plastics. Just reiterating what the others have said, basically, that it looks like it might be approved tonight. We're hoping that the Plastics Ordinance will be approved tonight, and we really appreciate the work that you've done on it. We're really happy that Phoenixville is a borough in a community that is taking this step and acting as a model for, for other communities around us. Yeah, we're just really happy and thankful. So voicing our support. Thank you.
No hands raised online.
Okay. With that, we'll close the first and first of two rounds of public participation. We will have one towards the end of the agenda as well, if you've missed your chance at this point. So going into section five, we have our consent agenda. What is council's pleasure for our consent agenda tonight?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is items A, B, and C in section five.
Second.
Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. She carries eight zero. Moving on to section six of the communications council participation, just as, you know, sort of a celebration or minor clarification. So item B, we are thanking our Eagle Scout, Ian Cochran, for, this did approve the motion to allow the refurbishment and repair at Reeves Park. So we appreciate the work that you're going to be doing, and we look forward to the results. So hopefully you can share some before and after pictures with us. So that is approved, and we appreciate it. Any other, I believe we have some other council participation. Mr. Kirkner, do you want to lead us off?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. It's, and forgive me if I get a little choked up here. I'd like to say a few words about Pat Naddle, Pasquale S. Naddle, Senior. He was a friend of mine for forty-plus years. Few words, well, it may be more than a few, but two words come to mind: ubiquitous and avuncular. Ubiquitous because he could be seen anywhere and everywhere around town. Sometimes you might have thought there were two or three of him, certainly back in the day. In the later years, he slowed down a little bit, but just on Election Day, I saw him up at the Recreation Center where our polling place is on the north side. He did his usual drive-by, checking in with me, and he still got around. Avuncular because he had that affect of a straight-talking, no-nonsense, a little gruff, but very lovable Italian uncle. And I can say that because I've had a number of Italian uncles, including one who was also named Pasquale. And the moment I met Pat, I just fell in love with the guy. It was like being around family. That drew me to him when I first met him forty years ago, and then I found out it just wasn't me. It was everybody he came into contact with. I mean, just, just everybody loved Pat. He, he made everyone who he encountered feel like they had a special relationship with him. He was one of nine children of Stanley and Sophie Naddle, growing up in a small row home on the north side on St. Mary's Street. You know, I can't believe, knowing about half of that family, I can't believe half of them fit in that house, let alone all of them. But from there, he would be an outstanding athlete at Phoenixville High School, before it was Phoenixville Area High School. And he was one of the first members of its Sports Hall of Fame. He's also in the Pennsylvania Softball Hall of Fame. He was, he was a tremendous athlete in his days, in his day. And then, for as long as anyone can remember, he worked at the Borough Streets Department. That's, that's where so many of us got to know him so well. And I remember when he rose to form it. If you wanted to get something done, if there was a pothole, a street sign needed to be replaced, a inlet that needed to be fixed, back in that day, you didn't call Borough Hall. You got in touch with Pat, and Pat came out and he got it done. He made it happen. So I also want to add that Pat and his family were and and are the epitome of the people who sustained this town through the hard years of deindustrialization. And I came in sort of at the end of that, but, and we've all heard about the, the hard times that downtown had undergone. But it was the neighborhoods that didn't go down that road that sustained this town, that really made it what it is today. And I really think that all of us who enjoy everything we have in this town today owe a debt of gratitude to people like Pat Naddle and his ilk, because they stayed. They stayed, and they made this town really what it is today. And I, as I said, I first met him when I came to town forty years ago. I was a beat reporter for the local newspaper. Yes, Phoenixville at one time had a daily newspaper. I don't know if many of you know that, but he was president of the local AFSMI unit. That's the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees. I like to spell out my abbreviations. I connected with him again in June of 1981. It was one of my last assignments. It was the last graduation class, the eighth grade graduation at Sacred Heart School, and his son, John, graduated at that time. And, you know, after, after the mass, I, I talked to Pat, and, you know, I realized this is, this is a genuine human being and a person that I would know for, for many, many years to come. He was president of our rec board. I've heard it say, said that he was president for forty-five years of the rec board. Just the other day, I talked to Bob McTavney, who used to be our recreation director. And Bob told me that when he was rec director, it was a much smaller operation then, but when he needed to get things done, he needed to talk to people, interact with people in the community, and Borough Hall get support. Pat did a lot of that legwork for him, and Pat was really invaluable for helping to build the rec department. So, so he really did a lot for the, for the town. Of course, Pat has a park named after him. Pasquale S. Naddle, Senior Field up on the north side, right next to my house. Every day, I look out my window and I see Pat. So, and that's a great thing that, that I have. He was very proud of that. I know he would go up to Reservoir Park across the street, sit on a bench there, look across Fillmore Street, and just look at his field. Just take it in. And I'm only sorry that we never got a chance to do a formal dedication of that field to Pat, be while he was alive. For all that Pat gave us, I really felt like that was something we could have at least given him. And, you know, I just want to say sorry about that, Pat. Pat suffered loss, too. I remember when he lost his beloved wife, Rosie, about ten years ago, and that really took a lot of wind out of his sails. Then about six years ago, his son, Pat Junior, passed on, and, and he really took that hard. But it's good to know he's resting in eternal peace with them now. I want to send my sympathies out to his family, his daughter Tressa, his sons Nicholas and John, and he has three sisters, Marguerite, Barbara, and Joan, and brothers Stanley, we know him as Butch, Naddle, Robert, Bobby, Naddle, Ronald, and Frank Senior. And, you know, we'll, we'll miss him. We'll miss him for sure. So I hope, I hope Pat rests well. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. The drive-bys were always memorable, because he always had something to tell you. That's what I always remember. Walking the dog, and you see the Cadillac, I think it was a Cadillac, pull up, roll down the window. Nothing intimidating about that. Any other council communications tonight, participation?
I don't know how you follow that, but I did have a few things. And I know we'll do this more formally, but I did want to thank Jessie Webb for her service as her last meeting with us. And, you know, I'm kind of a little sad, girl power on this side. But we certainly have stuck our hooks into her, and I think we're going to have her helping with the celebration of the 175th next year, and certainly we'll have her involved in other ways. I know we'll formally do something, but I just felt the need to call it out. So thank you. Mrs. Claus has been on the trot. She's been at a couple of different events. Thank you to the Borough for a wonderful tree lighting, even though it was rainy. Staff have done a wonderful job. We've tried to continue some traditions. We are still trying to also make the celebration of holidays more diverse. So if people have ideas, please reach out to me, reach out to Mrs. Claus. I know her. She has gotten to do several events, both borough-sponsored and then also just within Borough Park, like with Borough Partners, Colonial Theater, and Feet First did a wonderful production. She got to have a small role in that. And then I wanted to thank the Phoenixville Police Association and the Police Department. She got to attend Shop with a Cop last night. It was a fantastic evening where we were able to take some really special kids and give them an experience that they wouldn't normally have. So I wanted to thank everyone for that. I wanted to make a special thank you to borough staff, most especially, and to the community, and to the JCs and the Firebird Committee. We had a very successful Firebird Festival last Saturday, record numbers, I believe, and I think probably in talking, while there's always things to improve, in talking with borough staff, probably one of the smoothest festivals we've had. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Ms. Berkeley. Ms. Webb.
Yeah, as Ms. Berkeley said, this is my last meeting, so I just wanted to say thank you to everybody on council. Thank you to borough staff for all the help you guys have given me over the last two years. Being on this side of the podium on the inside, I can truly tell everyone, every single person up here cares just so much about this town and really just wants what's best for it. And thank you to all the residents that come out to all these meetings, because I know everyone here has so much passion. So just thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Jessie. We do appreciate your enthusiasm and energy jumping into the role. It's not an easy thing to, to take on midterm and volunteer for. So we really do appreciate the time you've spent, and we wish you were sticking around. But we'll have you in other ways, hopefully. So thank you. Any other participation tonight? With that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thanks again for joining us tonight. And certainly, it is an exciting celebration. We welcome a new officer onto our police force here in Phoenixville. So thank you again to all of our officers and everyone in the civil service, our Borough Council, everyone who makes that process possible. There's many pieces that go on behind the scenes to make that process. As Ms. Webb would attest to, nothing is ever just straightforward. It takes time, it takes effort, and it takes energy on behalf of a lot of people. And so thank you for doing that for us. A couple of things to highlight. We did open our new crosswalk officially in front of the Great American Pub and also in front of Connecting Great American Pub in Phoenix Village. So I want to thank certainly the borough staff who made that possible, the council, also our partners throughout the county, who also provided funding for them. So thank you so much. A great, very safe place to cross, and so we would encourage you to make sure you're using safe marked crosswalks when crossing Bridge Street. This last month, Alianza's to Phoenixville had their graduation from their Leadership Academy, Joy of Socks, which although is actually based here, their warehouse is based in Phoenixville, this last month gave away their millionth pair of socks to individuals in our community who may be needing additional assistance. So congratulations to the Joy of Socks. The Firebird Documentary, Built to Burn, premiered this last month in the borough of Phoenixville at our historic Colonial Theater. I believe it's playing till the fourteenth, fifteenth of December. And so we would encourage you, if you haven't had a chance to see it yet, go and see it before it is off to some film festivals. Let me see, the Christmas Spectacular in conjunction with the Colonial Theater and Feet First Dance Academy, absolutely extraordinary. It was over one weekend in December. We would highly encourage you, if you haven't had a chance, maybe check that out next year. A very special happy hundredth birthday to Jacqueline Taglieber, if you know Barry, who is one of our fire police, and also he's very involved in, he's a photographer for a number of news outlets. It was his mother's hundredth birthday, and she's still living in the original home that she and her husband purchased when he came back from war, right here in Phoenixville. So very exciting to celebrate her hundredth birthday with her. The PA Housing Alliance hosted Home Housing for Everyone recently, which is a conference throughout the Commonwealth. We were able to go and represent and also speak on behalf of encouraging affordable housing and different types of housing styles within communities. Citizens Advocacy had their yearly drawing for their trip to France. If you haven't heard of Citizens Advocacy, they are forty-two years old here in the borough of Phoenixville, and they really ensure that individuals have an advocate, they have a friend here within the community. So keep up that great work, and we hope many, many more years to come. As Ms. Berkeley said, the Firebird Festival, absolutely extraordinary. I do want to take a moment. We often forget to, Ms. Berkeley, oftentimes you see she has to abstain from voting, and that's generally because she is involved in a number of these very significant community events. And so I know that she pours her heart and soul, along with the entire Firebird Committee, into that event, but just wanted to give her a little shout out for that one, too. Thank you to our friends at Beni Jacob. Last Sunday, they had community menorah lighting for the fourth night of Hanukkah, an incredible event. And we hope, as Ms. Berkeley said, to see more of these incredibly diverse celebrations of the holiday season continue to expand throughout the Phoenixville community. And so thank you to the congregation, congregation Beni Jacob for that exciting experience. And we also see some Firebird Committee members out in the audience, too. So thank you all so much. I, just to piggyback off Ms. Berkeley, our Shop with a Cop, over twenty-five students. This is really being put on in conjunction with our Phoenixville Police Department, but really through our police association. Members of the association fundraise throughout the year and also personally contribute to ensure that these students are able to have a really exciting and a very, very special opportunity. On the sixteenth, at Steel City, there will be a Blue Christmas fundraiser for Ann's Heart. Ann's Heart runs our Code Blue program within the borough of Phoenixville. Check that out at Steel City. And on the twentieth of this month, make sure that you're tuned into the Preston and Steve Show that morning. Lots of surprises to come for that. Let me see. The second of January, we will have our reorg meeting, so we would encourage you to tune in. And as our reorganization takes place, and we swear in our new council members. And, oh, also, unfortunately, a sad note, we did lose... And, oh, also unfortunately, a sad note, we did lose, uh, Molly Dougherty, uh, Dougherty. Uh, Kathy Dougherty, who was a member of Borough Council for a number of years, her mother who had just turned 100 a couple of months ago, um, passed away recently. And so, uh, we just celebrate, as, uh, Mr. Kirchner says, celebrate many lives very well-lived and, uh, very important to our community. And then finally, I'll wrap up on a positive. Well, first, I want to wish you all a very happy holidays, uh, and to you and to all of those you love. Uh, be safe while celebrating and I would encourage you to celebrate whichever way you feel appropriate and you enjoy. But I wish you all a very, very happy holidays. And we'll end on a high note. Uh, we did find out last Friday that the Schuylkill River Passenger Rail Authority, so the restoration of rail service, we have been accepted into the Federal Rail Administration's Corridor Identification Program. And so this is a significant movement forward. That, that certainly round of applause goes to the numerous individuals who have worked on this, uh, throughout, uh, you know, probably, I always jokingly say, from the time the last train rolled through, uh, the Borough of Phoenixville, there's been a group trying to bring this back. Uh, we are fortunate because this is really in conjunction with Chester County, Montgomery County, Berks County, and it is the restoration of rail service from Redding through Pottstown, Phoenixville, Philadelphia, and on to New York City. It would be an Amtrak baseline and is one of 69 projects that the Federal Rail Administration has identified through this unique program that is funded through the infrastructure bill. So we are on our way. We are on track. Sorry, I couldn't resist. Uh, we are on track, but, um, that would not be possible without all of your support. Certainly as a community, it wouldn't be possible without our incredible staff and our Borough Council members, uh, who really work every day behind the scenes to push these initiatives forward. So thank you all very much. Very happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's move on to appointments, uh, tonight under section eight here. Every month we do ask, uh, residents, uh, who are interested in taking part, uh, basically are between all of our boards and committees, we have roughly 100 spots that we need help from our residents for various boards, commissions and committees. So, uh, we do have openings on Civil Service, Human Relations and Tree Advisory Commission. So, uh, most of these meetings are once a month or less, and we are looking for, uh, residents to help, uh, guide the hand of the future of the Borough. Uh, with that, we do have a resignation and an appointment on the agenda tonight. What is council's pleasure? We'll start with the one.
Go ahead with the.
Um, well, I would suggest that first we recess into executive session to talk about a couple of things we need to talk about. Matters of personnel, uh, related to, uh, the Civil Service Commission and Police Force and a matter of real estate.
So I will make a motion to recess into, uh, executive session for matters of personnel and real estate.
Second. We'll be back in a few minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to return to our public meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed. We are back in our public meeting.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Nicholas Kranek, um, from Civil Service Commission.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Just want to thank Mr. Kranek for his service on the civil service. Uh, with that, we'll go to item C, motion to appoint.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Beth Berkeley to the vacant position on the Civil Service Commission.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, question, second by Ms. Webb, questions on the motion?
Just, just to note, there is no compensation with this, just for the public edification.
Correct. Zero compensation, except the joy of taking part and the reward of being part of your community.
I, I didn't, I didn't mean to rub that in. I just didn't, didn't want the public to think.
I appreciate it before someone says that I have like a hot tub funded by the Borough or something.
All right. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, motion carries seven zero one. Thank you for stepping up. Uh, with that, under new business, we have, uh, several items to consider, uh, including our, uh, our meetings for next year. What is council's pleasure for item A?
I know that Mayor Urschler is excited for this because he gets the podium. So I will go ahead and, uh, make a motion to schedule and advertise the Borough Council Reorganization Meeting for January 2nd, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero.
Our next motion is to schedule and advertise the 2024 Meetings of Borough Council and various Boards, Commissions and Committees. Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb, questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. One clarification on item A, it is 6:00 PM, not 7:00 PM. Uh, as, as it is on the agenda, I just want to clarify. You're right. It's just, we've adjusted it for that day just to squeeze everything in.
I thought maybe I messed up, like I staged for eight or something.
Normally we do seven, so I'm just clarifying that.
Appreciate that.
For that one meeting, it will be 6:00 PM. So, uh, okay. And with that, we have our, our, uh, budget to consider. Question, uh, what is council's pleasure for the 2024 budget?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, um, to approve the 2024 General Fund and Enterprise, Enterprise Funds Budget.
Second. Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Kirchner, questions on the motion for the 2024 General Fund and Enterprise Fund Budget?
I'll just say thank you to staff. I know Dino probably will chime in and say the same. And while this is a very quick moment, there's been a lot of time that has led up to this moment and a lot of discussion. So it's a very quick moment right now, but it's been, there's been a lot vetted and a lot of consideration. Um, and I appreciate the open-mindedness of my colleagues on council as well as Monica, my goodness, you're a saint. Um, so thank you and thank you to staff.
Absolutely. A lot of work goes into it and, uh, a lot of, uh, number crunching to get us to where we are and be able to do what we do with what we have.
I did want to mention something like that because, um, it has been, as it is every year, but it was especially hard this year to try to get all of the, you, you know, it's like growing pains. We've got a new firehouse, we've got a new rec center and like there are certain things that we have to do that trying to figure out how to do and somehow our staff, Ms. Monica and Peggy over there, like it has been, it's a joy to work with these people. They are gifted and it's utterly, we are lucky in Phoenixville to have these people. So.
Absolutely.
I'd also like to thank the members of the public who, uh, on more than one occasion, attended the Finance Committee meetings and got a chance to hear how the sausage is made. And, uh, um, it was gratifying. I mean, I, I think a lot of people were attending maybe for other committee purposes, but it, it was helpful for people to really hear. And I encourage, as we go through this cycle every year, which we get started in, in August, you know, that's where we really take a look at everything in detail and the more people get a chance to understand what we're doing and talking about, the more that we can conduct this meeting and this decision i- in a relatively straightforward manner.
Very good. All those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, uh, our next, uh, next motion, I move for council to approve the honorable discharge due to permanent disability effective immediately of Officer Hakeem Lee, badge number 63, and approval of a service-connected disability pension for this officer, subject to the terms and conditions outlined by the Police Pension Fund or Police Pension Plan, and further approving Borough Council President or the Borough Manager to execute any documents necessary to the same effect.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And finally, we have, uh, something a little simpler.
I'm making a motion to approve the Brandywine Valley S- SPCA Animal Protection Services Division Full Contract for a Five-Year Agreement. Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb for the renewal of the SPCA contract. Any questions on this contract or motion?
I imagine this is pretty standard.
Mr. Solicitor reviewed, and he can chime in on that?
Sure. I was just going to say I reviewed, I made some comments. Uh, they changed some of my biggest concerns to make them non-concerning. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I think it's a satisfactory contract to this point.
I think the, um, I believe the County Consortium of Managers works to get them to revise much of their contract. And then I think they tuned in. Their, their starting document was not great. So, uh, we appreciate the work from, uh, from you on that one. So seeing no other comments, though, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have our tax levy that, uh, ties in with our budget. What is council's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance for the 2024 tax levy.
Second. Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on the tax levy motion? I think we've, uh, all of this ties back to item C from the previous section. So seeing no comment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And what is council's pleasure on the redistricting of wards and precincts motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion that council adopt an ordinance, uh, establishing the redistricting of wards and voting precincts.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Ms. Berkeley, questions on the motion? Mr. Solicitor?
I'm just going to give a little bit of background. I know I gave some last meeting, but just in case any members of the public, uh, didn't attend last meeting. Uh, we had passed a, uh, redistricting reapportionment of the wards, uh, in either a year ago or January of this year, uh, January of this year. Um, and while we think the law says that it's not our job to design the precincts within the wards, um, we know the county has a different view, so we went ahead and did that. The Department of State has to approve our redistricting. They had no problem with our ward boundaries. They had problems with the precincts. So the wards that are in this redistricting map are exactly the same as what we passed in January. The only thing that is changed is the precincts within the wards. Uh, so it will not change, uh, who you would be voting for on council, uh, as compared to what we passed in January. Um, it will change who you may be voting for in council as compared to who you voted for this past November.
Thanks, Scott. I do appreciate the work that staff, uh, our solicitor and our, uh, engineer firm actually put into this, having a GIS cartographer, I thought helped, uh, remove any, uh, local bias from it. So having someone who's just a, a map nerd in New Jersey, uh, really helps take any personality out of it and just create good lines for, for the next 10 years. So appreciate that and only wish that we were able to have adopted this earlier, but we'll move on from that. Questions, uh, any other comments? Mr. Moore?
Yes, uh, as the representative for the West Ward, um, and a resident of West Ridge, um, I just think it's important for those who are residents of the West Ward to be aware of a very significant shift in, in the, both the ward boundaries and how the, the precincts have been, uh, adjusted. Um, so, uh, the North Ridge and the Franklin Village has now been added to the West Ward. They previously voted in the North Ward. Um, and the neighborhoods, um, that are east of, uh, Bridge Street, uh, the West, West Bridge Street, which included Independence Crossing, Wood, and what we, everybody likes to refer to as the Presidential's, uh, streets are now part of the Middle Ward. And with that, with that adjustment, um, this has been a significant shift in, there'll be, will be a significant shift, I think, in the way, uh, where voting locations happen. So uh, I'd just like to, and I've already expressed this to the Borough Manager, I think it's important that we, uh, be a little bit more proactive, given some of the hiccups we had, more than hiccups with uh, County Voter Services last year that we, uh, you know, take an active step to, and I want to take an active step to engage with them to figure out, make sure that this changeover happens cleanly and particularly identify, you know, convenient polling locations within the new boundaries, uh, and how we can work that out is, is something I'm very much interested in. Obviously, as, as people are not aware, we don't control precinct locations, uh, the, I'm sorry, the voting locations. That's the voter services finds those locations and sets them up. So, uh, and I'd like to also urge staff to think a little, little bit about as we approach the election or the primary election in the spring, how we can help augment the communications about that voter services will make to these residents, uh, and help them understand. You know, people who have been used to voting at West End Fire Company for decades may not be voting there anymore. And people who are used to at North Ridge voting at the North, you know, North Ward, uh, locations may not be voting in those locations anymore. So I think it's an important thing that we manage in an intelligent way and, and with a very forward-looking way, particularly since we have a, it's a presidential election here and we have some pretty important, um, offices being both at the primary and at the, uh, general election.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
If I may add, with, with all due respect, I, I don't think it's Borough staff's job to, um, to, well, people call here and ask, where's my precinct? Yeah. They can, they, they can tell them that, but I don't think it's Borough staff's job to, to organize where people vote. I mean, the county decides that. They all, everyone who get, who has a change in precinct gets a piece of mail from the county. I, I don't know what role Borough staff has, except they, they fulfilled it already in, in the redistricting and, um, you know, help, helping us to get to this ordinance. I mean, from there, it's, it's on the county.
My, my feeling is that that's officially true. Um, but I feel like with this significant change, I'm just interested in finding ways to use, I mean, we have some pretty good communications resources. Um, you know, even if it's just, I'm not, you know, and I'm talking about direct mailing or anything like that. I'm talking about using some of our digital communication resources as we approach the election to just highlight, you know, this change has happened and, you know, I mean, you've got people, I know people who live, uh, over on some of the Presidential Streets who have been going to the West, the West End for years. Now, I'm not saying the West End isn't still going to be the, uh, second precinct for the West Ward voting location, but it may not, it may not be. So that's, that's just something that, uh, I'm very conscious of. Plus, we also have some really dedicated, um, volunteers who work the, the election booth. Some of them have been working there for decades. There, they also may be shifted around. So it's, it's just something that I'm concerned about and, uh, I appreciate your point, Mr. Kirchner, that, you know, this is not something that's assigned to the, to the Borough, to the municipality, but it's a big change and, and I'm, I'm very conscious of helping people understand.
Seeing no other questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. We have an update to, uh, chapter 15. What is council's pleasure on the motor, motor vehicle ordinance?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance limiting chapter 15, Motor Vehicles.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on the motion for updating chapter 15? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. We have a minor change to a street name. Uh, what is council's pleasure on this one?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance changing the name of a Borough Street.
Second.
Questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And with that, we have a, an item from Chester County Real Estate, uh, regarding Chester County owned real estate on 13 Railroad Street. What is council's pleasure on this item?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we, um, adopt a resolution authorizing the purchase of Chester County owned real estate located at 13 Railroad Street.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Ms. Berkeley. For clarification, the purchase price is $1. Uh, Mr. Solicitor?
I, I was going to say exactly that. The purchase price is $1. This is a property that was formerly owned by the Chester County Redevelopment Authority. Uh, Chester County dissolved its redevelopment authority, so the Borough has been maintaining this property uh, for a couple of years now. Um, and now Chester County has, uh, offered to, uh, sell the property to the Borough for $1.
Any other questions on the motion? We look forward to that redevelopment. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Lastly, under resolutions and ordinances, we have a, uh, motion pertaining to ladder 65 and N52. What is council's pleasure for the Fire Relief Fund or Fire Relief Association Agreement?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the reimbursement of Phoenixville, uh, of the Phoenixville Volunteer Firefighters Relief Association for 10% of the equipment installed on ladder 65 and engine 65 dash two in the event of, um, divest. on Ladder 65 and Engine 65-2 in the event of divestiture of their four, their four of the borough. Sorry, I wrote on top of that.
Not a problem.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on this motion, Ms. Dugan?
Can we get to six points?
Absolutely. It's very, it's a simple, but, you know, less ordinary for us.
Sure. Some of the opportunities that the Relief Association has over and above the use of funds for consumables such as personal protective equipment, fire hoses and what have you, they can also add certain kinds of equipment onto our various apparatus, which is what they've done 2010, 2011, 13, 14, 15 timeframe. And the, the funds are also allowed to be reimbursed, and that's a negotiated term. The common is, over the course of the years, about 10% of that. So we're looking at about $7,000 or $20,000 worth of equipment on Ladders 65-2, which is the engine. And so we would be reimbursing them for about $20, $2,500. We've just sold 65-2, so we'll be issuing that. And then when we sell Ladder 65, after we get the new tiller, again, the amount of equipment that was put on was about $20,000 worth. We'll be reimbursing them for somewhere in the $2,000, $2,500 range when we sell 65.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. That brings us to public hearings, which I'm not aware that we have any, so we'll move on to Reports Committee from Committees, Boards and Commissions. Up first, Mr. Moore with Planning Commission.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan for the development known as 197 Bridge Street Expansion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Berkeley. We do have the applicant here with us today. And Mr. Solicitor, if you want to give us some background?
Sure. So this is a project for 197 Bridge Street, a portion of which is currently the home to Molly McQuire's. The application is to add additions to the existing second and third floors and add a fourth floor to create seven new residential apartments in addition to the existing five. As a part of the development, the applicant has agreed to some streetscape improvements in order to increase the walkability and ADA compliance of the sidewalk along Main Street. The applicants were before the planning commission several times and received a recommendation for approval. One of the conditions in the draft approval resolution that is in your packet, it includes compliance with the Harv decision. And since this is a matter of land development and applicant here, I do want to give the applicant an opportunity to make any statements if they so choose and also provide a public comment if there is any on this application. So with that, would the applicant like to make any statements? You're not required to, but if you would like to, you have the opportunity. Okay. In case that wasn't picked up on the microphone, the applicant said they don't have any statements to add at this time. Is there, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this development? Seeing none here in person, any online?
No hands raised, Mr. Denmanier.
Okay. Then I turn it back to council. Council has a motion on the floor.
Questions from council about the application?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Yes, Ms. Dugan.
Um, more downtown, very crowded. Keep on eliminating parking spaces for whatever reason now. And now we're gonna have more places, where are these people supposed to park now? Just wherever they can find, again. This is, this is starting to get problematic because there's nowhere to park in this town. So I'm frustrated with this, but, you know, the rest of it looks nice, but you just have to have a hovercraft.
Other questions or comments for council on this application? I appreciate the work from staff and our consultants on this one. I think we've come to a good, good middle ground for the improvements that will be done for the streetscapes and everything else. So any other comments, any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven one, seven two, six two. Math. All right, Ms. Dugan, pardon. Okay. Ms. Kirchner with Regional Planning Committee.
Not much to report, except that all these years after the COVID restrictions lifted, the Regional Planning Committee has been meeting by Zoom. And we are finally having a discussion. We engaged our solicitor about going forward next year with in-person meetings again. So, but it, but we haven't voted on it yet. So I'll keep, I'll keep you posted. Thank you.
Rec Board, Ms. Dugan.
Okay, lots of fun stuff, like always. We have, well, first of all, we have a blood drive on December 18th from 1:00 to 6:00 at the Rec Center. Please come out and be generous with that. We have a holiday yoga workshop, which is with yoga with holiday handbells. So this one is on December 13th from 6:00 to 7:00 at the Rec Center. Got a couple of programs for safe sitter. We've got a safe sitter one for grade six to eight. And they get to practice on mannequins to even to, to help with rescue and choking situations, CPR. And then we have one for grandparents getting started by safe sitter, which is just to give people that are already experiencing this, all the latest information on ways to lifesaving things, choking, rescue, all that thing. And that one is Saturday, February 24th from 9:30 to 12:30. And then there is the AARP Driver Safety Program. That's Wednesday and Thursday, January 17th and 18th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We've got a winter break youth yoga from December 26th to December 29th from 9:30 AM to 3:00 PM or half day of 9:30 or 9 o'clock to 12 o'clock. And that's for K to 12 year olds. And then we have table tennis skills improvement classes on Mondays, January 8th, 15th, 22nd and 29th. For, at 6:00 to 7:00 for youth, 7:00 to 8:30 for adults. There's the Youth Basketball Academy on Mondays from January 22nd to February 26th. And then we have badminton lessons on Saturdays from 10:00 to 12:00, beginning on January 6th from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. Fundamentals of Tennis at the Phoenixville Rec Center on, starting Wednesdays, January 10th to the 31st. And there's in a second session, January 7th to the 25th. If you're interested in that, look into that. We've got the Youth Coed NFL Flag Football Training Academy at the Renaissance Academy from February 24th to March 30th on Saturdays. Circuit Class with Core is at the Rec Center on Thursdays. There's two sessions. Well, there's actually the session, the next session starts January 11th to February 29th. And then Strength, Core and Flexibility on Thursdays from January 8th to February 26th from 6:00 to 6:45. We've got key gong. That's every Friday from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Ballet class is Saturdays, January 6th, 13th, 20th and 27th from 9:30 to 12, to 10:30 in the morning for a $10 drop in fee. So that's a pretty good deal. Ballet is a lot of fun. And then finally, we've got pickleball clinic, Smashville at the Rec Center Thursday, starting January 25th through February 29th. And the second session will start from March through the end of April. So that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan. With that, we'll move on to Tree Advisory Commission. Ms. Berkeley?
No updates, but I did want to thank everybody that came out for our fall planting. We had a nice showing from the Boy Scouts, which was awesome. And I, we had a really great event. They incorporated a lot of other community partners. So thank you to everyone for that.
It does, walking through town, it just seems like we have lots of trees going in. It's a nice thing to continue to see. And I know staff and tack work very hard on that. So it is, it is a nice effort and has nice dividends. So I appreciate that. We'll move into council action referred from committees. Ms. Berkeley, back to you.
I don't have anything specific. We did cancel the meeting, but I did want to thank, congratulate the force and our new officer. Thanks, council, for supporting the addition of an officer. And also thank you for trusting me to be part of the civil service. Certainly, as applicants come through from the public, we'll, we'll interview those, but I'm excited to see that process.
Thank you. Mr. Moore with Parks and Rec?
No additional action to report. The, this month's meeting was canceled. The next meeting will be in January, January 6th, Tuesday, the 16th, at 6:00 of the Parks and Rec Committee. And a reminder that we will be reviewing the Phoenixville Inside Out plans for the following, for 2024 at that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Kirchner, Policy Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance amending Chapter 10 Health and Safety by adding a new Part Five Plastics.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yeah, if I may, there, there may be one edit that's needed under, let's see, single-use plastic straw or stirrer, number three signage requirement from the effective date of this part through December 31, 2024. The effective date is January 1, 2025. So. I think the intent of that was to say that they have until December 31st to put everything into place. And then January 1 is when everything becomes effective. I may have misread that. I think that was the intent of that. That's why it was December 31st. Okay, but that does, that does follow on paragraph one that says, except this provided in this section between in January 1, 2025. So I, as I read this, the effective date is January 1, 2025. So that, that may, that may need some tweaking. Minor editing changes.
None, something to say.
Yeah.
Just to clarification, are we voting to approve this or just to schedule?
This is, this is just scheduling and advertising.
So we'll still have time for business owners to review the final draft?
Yep. And they have, we've received much feedback at the last policy, last two policy meetings. So, yes, it is still, it won't be until the January meeting for vote.
So, yes, Mr. Carmanio, so now this will become even more public because we're scheduling it. And I know staff, Kelly and I kind of had a, which came first, the chicken or the egg, you know? So educating the public on what, what this means, the interpretation of it, because I know they've had a lot of input, but I still have realized in talking with the public and business owners, there's confusion. So staff are working on some educational documents for the public, which are great. It's just kind of like, if it's not official, do we continue with those? So I think we can continue between now and our next council meeting to work with Jeff on those. We can also, as good stewards, just like, we want to spread the word about precincts changing, we can spread the word about this and talk with business owners and give them, you know, that, that touch and that, that education as those that represent them. I think that's important because sometimes it does get dicey, like what's, you know, staff's job, what's our job and all of that. So I think that that's something that we can really look at. We've also had some really good forums around tables. I think you're the one who brought up that term with the chamber. So it's something that maybe you and I, if we attend the next one, or any other council member that wants to attend, can be there to speak to just as far as any misinterpretation or anything like that. But between now and then, I don't think we have a policy meeting. I would also maybe ask Mr. Kirchner, even though this may pass at the next council meeting and we won't have a policy meeting before then, would you be okay with the January policy meeting reviewing some of the educational documents? So if the public wanted to come and get an understanding of that, it may already be passed by them, but we could share those documents in that meeting?
If I happen to be on the policy committee at that time?
Okay.
But that, that may be a question.
Part, yeah.
More, more appropriate for the president of council.
Okay. But would, so I think, are we okay with that, you know? Okay. So I think.
Yeah, I think it's.
You know, I always am education, education, education. And right now, it's not official. We haven't approved it. So we're not educating on something that's actually been passed, but I think the more we can give information to the public, the better.
Yeah, I think it's helpful now that we know what the final draft looks like. We can get that out to business owners and the public and receive feedback on that prior to voting on it. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions, comments, Ms. Dugan?
Well, I know this is just for scheduling, but I really think that this is a state issue. I think it's kind of above our pay grade. And I think that this piecemeal thing of having one county do this and another county not do this, and one borough, one township. I think this is, this is just, it's not going to work out when you have all these patchwork of laws like this. But, yeah, I'm not going to be voting for this, even to schedule it.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, if I may, Mr. President, this is, this has traveled quite a road, this, this ordinance. And I wanted to thank my two colleagues on the Policy Committee, Ms. Berkeley and you, Mr. President, for sticking with it. I know it hasn't been easy at times. I also want to thank Borough Manager Crack and Code Enforcement Director Bulker for their input. They did an awful lot of legwork looking at other ordinances. And we've made some, some changes to those. They, they served as a template, but certainly not as a boilerplate. So I do, and I appreciate all of the input we've got, we've received from the public, from, from Ms. Doyle, Mr. Graham, Mr. Letzker, Mr. Platt, and all the people who came out to, to these committee meetings, month after month after month, it seemed. But we got, we got to this point and I'm, I'm glad to see it. I agree with Ms. Dugan in that I do think this is something the state should take up. I also know this is something the state won't take up. And I know, living, I said I live next to Patton Addle Field. I don't know how many plastic bags I pull out of that field that blow down across the fence. I have a little grabber that goes through the fence and I yank those things through the fence. And if you drive down Township Line Road, North on Township Line, from Mallory Road to, to Route 23, when the foliage is gone, as we're getting into that season now, you will see a history of the American plastic bag industry on, on full display to your left there. So they are eyesores, Route 113 going out of the borough. There's, there's a lot of trash along there. You know, it's, if we can knock that down a little bit, I, plus all the, you know, the harm these microplastics do to the environment. If we can knock that down a little bit, it's, you know, it's an incremental difference, I agree. But it, it's a small difference. So it's a small step we can take. Other communities have taken it. We can take this step too. And until the state gets on board, I, unfortunately, this is the way we have to do it. I wish the state would do something, but I, I won't hold my breath because I want to breathe.
I think the last time this was in front of the state, it was actually, they passed legislation to ban banning of plastic bag ordinances. So, yeah, I, I too wish that the state would do it, but, and this is not a reflection of our local elected officials. But literally, the last time this was in front of them, they prevented ordinances like this from being enacted. So I'm not holding out hope on that level. So there's been a number of times that we've been the leading edge on legislation and policies that perhaps were above our pay grade. But I think it's worked out pretty well. So we'll keep trying. Mr. Carmanio?
Yeah, I said one final comment. Do we have to vote on this by the January 9th meeting? Given that we're just seeing the final draft now, like, would it give us more time, let everybody? Because there's not much is going to happen between now and January 9th. So maybe it's something we consider at the February meeting? Just to give everybody time to look it over and know what's coming?
Well, if we, we have to schedule and advertise for a date cert. So my understanding of the motion is to schedule and advertise for the January meeting. Certainly, there could be, you know, as they say, a dueling. you know, as they say, a dueling motion, uh, or you could ask the motion maker to amend their motion, um. You know, I, but w- once we schedule and advertise, we have to.
I think that's a really good idea to change that, because during the Christmas season, nobody's going to hear about it, nobody's going to know what's going on, and I know this is something that most of the town's going to be interested in.
And the business owners aren't focused on plastic bag ordinances right now, they're focused on shopping.
I, I appreciate that. I, I would just say that we've, we've now discussed this, this policy item more than we discussed authority, thirty-four million dollar budget. And, uh, we've spent six months on this. I, I feel every shop owner has seen some iteration, they know it's coming. Uh, the outreach that you have done, uh, I, I feel like we're at the point where, uh, kicking it any further is, is not uh, beneficial, but that's just, that's just my position.
Yeah, my, my point is that we just got the, we just finalized the draft now, so. Two weeks ago, it was approved, the final draft, so we hadn't been talking about it because we didn't know what it was going to be, what the final draft was going to be, what was going to include. It was still being worked out, so.
It would not change the implementation date, correct?
No. Well, I mean, it, that depends on the motion.
Who made the motion, Rich?
I.
Would you be, would you consider amending the motion to advertise for the February meeting? I, I have actually a question for solicitor. We, we schedule and advertise the hearing, we hold the hearing. We don't have to pass the ordinance with that, at that, at that time, right? We can, we can, can, can we, are we required to either act on the, on the, on the ordinance or not?
So, first of all, this does not require a hearing.
Oh, oh.
Um, but yes, you're not required to act. You can certainly table something after you advertise it, but if you want to bring it back up again, then you have to re-advertise it. Um, so from a, you know, fiscal standpoint, if you are thinking now you want to, uh, consider it in a month different than January, I would probably make that motion now.
And I, I would not make that motion now, only because, um, if we advertise it for February, that means we're not, we don't have a version that we're advertising. We're, we're deciding to take it to February because we're thinking there will be changes made in January. So then that bumps us back to bringing it to the February meeting for approval of advertising it for action at the March meeting. So a- as I see it, that puts us back, and that, that removes three months from the calendar for businesses to prepare for it, for implementation in January one, twenty-twenty-five. So instead of having eleven months or eleven and a half months to prepare for implementation of the ordinance, if we act on it in the March meeting, they have with nine and a half months to prepare for it, so, um. So I, I think a motion to, tonight, to advertise it for the February meeting would be pointless because what are we, what are we advertising for the February meeting? Are we advertising this version for the February meeting, and if so, why not take it up at the January meeting? I mean, and there has been, we, we've had months of input here from the business community on this. It's, it's not like they're not prepared for it. Um, you know, there, there are people here who came, came to the meeting tonight to talk about it. So I, I don't see the, the logic or the sense in acting tonight to advertise something for two months from now, when it could change, that when what we are advertising could change in the meantime.
And, and Mr. Kirkner makes a good point, what you would be advertising, whether it's for January, February, March, or any other month, is the version that is before you.
Now, I, I support, the, I, I think we have to respect the committee process. The policy took responsibility for this. It was available for any of us as members of the council to, to learn about. I've spent some time reading the various versions of it. Haven't dug in lately, but the, the, that's why we have committees. And then we get presented a final work product as an ordinance, that's, you know, it has, has that, and then we have to just look at it and make, and do our job and vote on it or not. So I, 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 it's, it, the committee's done its work, we, we have to now do ours, and we have to do it. It's ready to go.
And I appreciate that, and I appreciate Mr. Carbonito trying to be respectful of the businesses. I think, again, between now and the ninth, if we feel like we are going to support it, then we, as people who represent businesses, where the public have a job to then answer questions and educate people on what it is, which I will continue to advocate for, and I think additionally, even if it is passed in January, we have a responsibility to educate people on what it means and what it is, and we'll work with staff and, and other entities to do so. But I appreciate where you're coming from.
And if I may, I, this is our second bite of the apple. This, this came to council previously a few months ago, and we decided to take it back into committee and, and tweak it, revise it. We've done that, we've gone through the process, we had about three or, well, at least three public meetings in committee with, uh, with the interested parties. We've got a lot of input on it, we made a lot of changes to it. Uh, I think it's, and, and, you know, where, where you are, we're behind other communities, and we, we are a unique community. We have two supermarkets in town. West Chester has none, incidentally. We have, we have two, we have big retailers here, and we can make an impact with that.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six, two. Next up, authorization for letters, uh, to our state reps. What is council's pleasure? Oh, sorry, Rich, this is you. Jumping the gun here.
Mr. President, if, if I may make a motion, if I, if I have any voice left here, um, I would, I make a motion that, uh, council authorize a letter draft is in your packet to our state representative Senator Muth and Representative Freel seeking legislation to give municipalities the ability to regulate games of chance. Pardon me? Games of chance.
Well, tha- that's part of the problem, and that's part of the loophole. Uh, games of chance, games of skill, what constitutes what? Uh, it, it's not clearly defined in the law right now, and that's part of what we're asking, or we would be asking, uh, the state to clarify.
Am I correct in understanding? I was just going to say, am I correct in understanding there's a motion on the table that needs to be seconded, so I will second before we.
Thank you, much my Mr. Kirkner, second by Ms. Berkeley, discussions on the item. Do we clarify the questions of the motion?
Do you want to give a little, I know the policy committee discussed this, um, do, do we want to give a little background for the rest of the council?
If, just for, uh, for the letter that has been written, it says, uh, 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 skills. So while the, the motion inadvertently says games of chance, that, that was written before I delved into the, the information presented by the solicitor's office and other things. So I think the letter, uh, calls it, uh, uh, skills, uh, games. And so that's throughout the letter that will go to
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Freel and Miss, uh, Miss Muth.
And therein lies much of the problem.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, a- and just for, for council's knowledge, I, I, I mean, this is a hot topic right now in the court system, and there was a case that came out as recently as November thirtieth from the Commonwealth Court on this. Um, this is something that, um, from my standpoint as a solicitor, I would like to be clarified in the law, certainly.
Right, all right. Any other comments, uh, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero. Anything else, Mr. Kirkner?
Nothing more. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sounds good. Mr. Weiss, ITTS.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, just want to reiterate how excited we are about the, um, uh, continued forward progress on the train, um, service, um, getting the Federal Rail Authority to accept us into the corridor. Um, identification program is super exciting. We're going to continue to monitor that and work with the parties involved in the ITTS committee, and we're very excited to do so. Um, other than that, our December meeting has been canceled, so our next meeting will be on one sixteen at seven PM. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Dugan with finance.
After passing the budget, we have nothing else.
Sounds good. With that, we'll open up the second final round of public participation. Any members of the public who should make comments tonight? There in council chambers, please make your way up to the podium, or members joining us via Zoom. If you'd like to raise your hand digitally, a member of our staff will, uh, unmute you and allow you to speak.
David Lutzker again, um, I wanted to ask Mr. Kirkner about the PRPC meetings, um, to consider, um, moving them to hybrid rather than just taking from Zoom to in-person. Just a thought to bring to the group.
Thank you. Any members of the public on Zoom? Seeing those hands raised, we will close the second final round of public participation. Any, uh, communications or council participation?
If I may, Mr. President, I was asked a question at
Yes.
Public participation. That is something we discussed, uh, the issue is that there may not be the technology available or the people to run the technology available to do that.
Thank you. And as, uh, many of our counselors have mentioned tonight, the rest of the meetings for this month are canceled. On the back of the agenda is our, uh, next slate of meetings starting in January, on the second with reorg, and, uh, all the committee and, and, uh, board meetings that follow that. Uh, in your pack, there are staff reports for, uh, all the various department heads. Uh, on, uh, as one announcement for, uh, for legal sake, on November fourteenth, uh, council did meet in executive session to discuss real estate and litigation. Uh, tonight, we do have the necessity to meet in an executive session again to discuss personnel, real estate and litigation. We will not be taking any action from that, uh, executive session, so with that, uh, any, oh, Ms. Berkeley.
I, well, no, I was just going to make the motion, do you need?
Nope.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn into executive session, as you mentioned, for personnel, real estate and litigation.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Thank you, everybody. We'll see you in January.